This council meeting started. Madam Clerk, could you please read the roll?
Mr. Bozen.
Here.
Mr. Amos.
Here.
Mr. Morrissey.
Here.
Mrs. Klein.
Here.
Mr. Foyce.
Here.
Mr. Greider.
Here.
And Mrs. Jewen.
Here.
All right, thank you. If you would please join, please join me in a moment of silence. All right, thank you. The pledge will be led by Mrs. Margaret Klein, Ward One Councilmember.
We are the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all.
I like reading the response to reading at church. You get a little behind, you start hearing. How you doing? All right. Um, yes ma'am.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as proposed and the minutes of the August 24th, 2020 regular session as presented.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? All right, we have an agenda. First item on the agenda is a proclamation focusing on Diabetes Awareness Week. Uh, and for Mrs. Saffold, we will mail this. I think I have a letter here that states that. Uh, City of Waterloo, Iowa proclamation, whereas focus on diabetes partners with accredited doctors and world-class healthcare organizations to offer hands-on experience with new technologies, education on new treatment options, and free screenings for diabetic patients, their families, and the community. And whereas the March 31st, 2020, 31st, 2020 CDC morbidity and mortality report stated that the highest percentage of positive COVID-19 tests in the ICU were patients with diabetes. And whereas the Focus on Diabetes organized the Focus on Diabetes COVID-19 Assist and gave away 200 free diabetic supplies. And whereas due to COVID-19, diabetic patients may face challenges getting doctors, appointments, and may not be able to get the essential health checkups. And whereas the Focus on Diabetes Initiative is endorsed by the State of Iowa Healthy Estate Initiative. And whereas Focus on Diabetes is offering an essential service for the community by hosting the Cedar Valley Focus on Diabetes. Now therefore, I, Quinton Hart, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, do hereby proclaim September 7th through the 12th, 2020 as Focus on Diabetes Awareness Week. And we encourage all local community members and legislators to get a free A1C screening at the Cedar Valley Focus on Diabetes at the Waterloo Center for Arts between 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., Saturday, September 12th. And that is, uh, Saturday, September 12th, at the Waterloo Center for Arts, 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. for a free A1C screening. So, thank you for your incredible advocacy uh, and making sure we can all get screened and checked as well. So, thank you, Ms. Saffold. All right. Another proclamation, uh, for Hunger Action Month by Brian Heloso. Um, so I think that hopefully that's right. Um, for Hunger Action Month. Whereas hunger and poverty are issues of grave concern in the United States and Waterloo. And whereas the City of Waterloo is committed to taking steps to raise awareness about the need to combat hunger in every part of our state and to provide additional resources that citizens of Waterloo need. And whereas the City of Waterloo is committed to working with the Northeast Iowa Food Bank in educating people about the role and importance of food banks in addressing hunger and raising awareness of the need to devote more resources and attention to hunger issues. And whereas nearly 18,360 individuals in the Blackhawk, in the Blackhawk County rely on food provided by the Northeast Iowa Food Bank and member agencies annually. And whereas the Northeast Iowa Food Bank distributed more than 6.9 million meals of food to member agencies, programs, and food banks in our region last year. And whereas food banks across the country, including the Northeast Iowa Food Bank, will host numerous events throughout the month of September to bring awareness and attention to encourage involvements and efforts to end hunger in their local community. Now therefore, I, Mayor Quinton Hart, do recognize September 2020 as Hunger Action Month. In Blackhawk County, and I call this observance to the attention of our citizens. So another extremely, extremely important proclamation for food insecurity within our local community. So please support our local food bank as well. All right. So now it's time for oral presentations. Your opportunity to address the council. Is there anyone in the audience first that would like to address the council? Please come up, state your name and address for the record.
Actually, we have one who had signed up to speak for five minutes, too. Bob Manning.
Yes, sir. Mr. Manning, are you there? Oh, you're here. Not there, here. Take off the tee. Mr. Manning, would you please come forward, state your name and address for the record, sir. Thank you. Sorry about that.
Thank you, Mayor. I didn't know what protocol was. I thought it was supposed to appear in person. Bob Manning, 2908 West Third Street in Cedar Falls. Um, never would have appeared in person if I knew that I could stay at home because my college roommate watches this all the time and says the camera puts another 10 pounds on him. So, this is the last time you'll see me here if it's an option. Um, I'm here to talk about the 2020 parade of homes, and I have some good news for y'all. Uh, that's coming up a week from this weekend. And, uh, we have one house in Hudson, very fine, fine-built house, very sharp. Uh, three houses will be presented in Cedar Falls, and five houses will be presented in Waterloo. Um, the Waterloo houses include a house in all parts of the city, actually. Uh, one on Shelley Lane off of West Fourth Street, uh, two on Blue Wing Drive in the Audubon Park area, uh, one off of Wax, in, on Waxwing, excuse me, one on Waxwing in South Waterloo, and one on Clay Street in Waterloo, uh, for the five houses. We're excited about that. We, uh, have, this has always been a signature event of the Home Builders Association. And, uh, we're pleased to see that, we've always said that Waterloo has excellent potential if there are lots for it to build on. And, um, so, we're excited to pass on that good news. And, uh, certainly, uh, more information is available on our website at cedarvalleyhomebuilders.com. Okay, cedarvalleyhomebuilders.com. If you get half of that in, you'll get, uh, uh, the Google will get you to where you need to go. So, uh, we look forward and we're excited to see five houses in Waterloo. The, the majority of the houses in our parade will be right here, um, in, uh, in these zip codes. And it's exciting for us to see that, so.
All right. Thank you so much, Bob. Thank you very much. Cedar Valley Home Builders as well for, uh, their continuous advocacy for housing in our local community and being leaders of doing as such. So, I want to thank you for your efforts over the years to, uh, making sure that we're moving forward. So, thank you, sir. Right. Yes, sir.
David Dreyer, 3145 West Fourth Street. Um, I read from the resolution on the mass that was, uh, presented to us, what, three weeks ago? Um, whereas the Iowa Department of Public Health reopening guidance advised that members of the public consider the use of cloth face covering when distancing is not possible because wearing a face mask is, in public places where social distancing measures are difficult, can help slow the spread of COVID-19. My comments are, uh, you have a compelling interest in protecting the citizens of Waterloo. Our Department of Health has one considerate, has, one should consider a face mask when distancing not possible, so make masks. The council feels a requirement is needed. As many facts are out there, you, to yes or no, I don't have the time here while council members to spout a list of doctors' names who say no mask necessary. A mask? Studies show the N95 mask, the mask needed for medic professionals does have, does not have a tight enough weave to stop the COVID-19 spores, much less a cloth mask of multiple layers. This means to me, should I cough in my mask, it doesn't mean I don't just expel the virus for someone to catch. This decision by the authorities, AKA the council, quotation marks, the in the know, quotation marks, the elite, is a great display of an authori- authoritarian decision, one-sided by the ones in power. So if the mask is so great, as stated in the mandate, you can't maintain six feet where your mask, why are the council members not present in the chamber tonight? I compliment the two who are here. And Mr. Mayor, you as well, Kelly. I refuse to live in fear. Uh, God has my name in his book. I'm gonna die from something. The flu takes a lot of people, uh, coronavirus, uh, car accidents, et cetera. So, what's your number? Thank you.
Well, I just, uh, want to say, uh, uh, council members that are not here, we discussed it. Uh, we're meeting, um, virtually like other councils across the state and the country. Uh, I applaud their decision, uh, to do so. And if they need to stay at home for their own personal reasons, uh, that's between, uh, themselves. So I'm not gonna call them, call them out per se. Um, and I, and I do, my heart goes out to the friends, the relatives, and the people that I know that have suffered and lost their lives due to COVID. So, we're gonna do everything we can, whether, um, folks agree with it or not, to try to keep people safe. So I do thank you for your comments, sir.
My, my heart goes out to anyone that has passed, lost a relative.
All right. Is there anyone else? Counsel, any comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Klein.
I would like to, um, uh, first of all, applaud Leisure Services for the new skate park that's coming up, and the open house for that is October 1st at 5:00 p.m. I encourage everyone to go out and take a look at that. That's, to me, that's just amazing. I supported it all the way, and I still support it, and I'm gonna be there to watch those guys do those tricks. It's right across from Mid-America, and I think you'll really enjoy seeing it. So, come on out to that ribbon-cutting ceremony on October 1st.
All right, anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Foyce.
Thank you. Uh, I just wanted to highlight a couple of things that are, that are going on with Experience Waterloo. Uh, they've launched an initiative to help Waterloo bar owners who have been shut down by the governor's executive order. The Pour It Forward program is a gift card program that Experience Waterloo is facilitating for Waterloo-based bars. Many local bars do not have the ability to conduct this type of program on their own. So Experience Waterloo stepped up in an effort to support these establishments that ultimately helped create a unique destination for visitors and residents alike. And then we also, uh, just wanted to state that September marks the start of the first annual Experience Waterloo Cup. It's a virtual golf tournament from Experience Waterloo. She can function with Waterloo Leisure Services and Golf Waterloo. This is a self-guided golf tournament that participants can pay $5 to enter a chance to win a slew of prizes with packages up to $250. And the promotion also serves as a fundraiser for the Cedar Valley Sports Commission. Uh, both promotions can be found on Experience Waterloo's Facebook or Instagram page or at their website, experiencewaterloo.com.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Anybody wanna close presentations? Somebody wanna close?
I'm sorry, was there anyone else that wanted to speak?
We got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Make a mo- I have finished my motion. Make a motion to close oral presentations, receive comments, and place on file.
Second.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. Um, consent agenda, yes ma'am?
Like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the addition to 1A1 bill's payment in the amount of $5,43,883.35 to receive, approve, and place on file.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Um, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mrs. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
And Mrs. Jewen.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Uh, could someone take number two, please? Anyone? Someone?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey.
Like to make a motion to approve the following request by 18 A&amp;T Trucking LLC for site plan amendment to the M2P Planned Industrial District to allow for the construction of a new, uh, 4,350 square foot trucking facility located south of 2280 Northeast Drive at the southeast corner of the Northeast Drive and Martin Luther King Jr. Drive.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, are there any comments on file?
There are no comments on file.
Is there anyone in the audience or on cyberspace that would like to speak to this particular item on the agenda? Going a second time.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file the recommendation of approval of Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion to receive, file, consider, and pass for the first time in ordinance amending ordinance number 5079, this amended City of Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending the official zoning map referred to in Section 10-4-4 to approval request by A&amp;T Trucking LLC for site plan amendment to the M2P Planned Industrial District to allow for the construction of a new 4,350 square foot trucking facility located south of 2280 Northeast Drive at the southeast corner of the Northeast Drive and Martin Luther King Jr. Drive.
Second.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mrs. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen.
Yes.
And Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mrs. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen.
Yes.
Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
And Mr. Amos.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion to consider and pass for the second and third times and adopt the said ordinance.
Second.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Uh, Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen.
Yes.
Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
And Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Could someone take number three? Anyone?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Amos.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Amos.
Uh, like to make a motion for the sale and conveyance of property located at the southeast corner of Martin Luther King Jr. Drive and Northeast Drive to A&amp;T Trucking LLC in the amount of $1 and to approve a development and minimum assessment agreement for the development of a 4,350 square foot building. Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Are there any comments on file?
There are no comments on file.
Is there anyone in the audience or cyberspace that would like to comment on this item? Second time?
Mr. Bear.
Mr. Amos.
Like to make a motion to close the hearing. Second.
Motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion adopting a resolution authorizing the sale and conveyance of city-owned property located at the southeast corner of Martin Luther King Jr. Drive and Northeast Drive to A&amp;T Trucking LLC in the amount of $1 and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Uh, counsel comments? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen.
Yes.
Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
And Mrs. Klein.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion adopting a resolution approving the development and minimum assessment agreement with A&amp;T Trucking LLC for the construction of a 4,350 square foot building and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Uh, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen.
Yes.
Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mrs. Klein.
Yes.
And Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Number four, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Bozen.
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, uh, proof of publication and notice of public hearing for the sale and conveyance of city-owned property located at 219 Newell Street in the amount of $139,900 to Cam and Nicole Smith.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? The hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, are there any comments on file?
There are no comments on file.
Uh, in the audience or cyberspace?
David Dreyer, 3145 West Fourth Street. Uh, is this one of the properties that we sold to Hawkeye for a dollar? And if so, then, uh, who gets the money from this sale? Uh, if we gave that property to Hawkeye, then we also give them like $135,000 to build this house. So, who's getting the profit or the money off of this sale? Thank you.
All right, no.
I know Anderson Community Planning Development Director. So this program was set up as a partnership with Hawkeye, um, to where we would div them lots for them to build houses on. When the house is complete, then we will pay them for the house at the approved amount. For this house, it was 135,000. Um, then we will sell it to a private individual, take that money to move on and build the next house. Um, Hawkeye has this house completed. House two is under construction and house three is starting construction. So we hope that the partnership will continue to sell the houses to a point where we can make a profit and then move on to build the next house because we're not only doing infill development in Waterloo, creating new housing opportunities, but we're also training students as a workforce for tomorrow.
All right, thank you. Any other questions?
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral comments.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is closed.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to adopt a resolution authorizing the sale and conveyance of city-owned property located at 219 Newell Street in the amount of $139,900 to Cam and Nicole Smith and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Jewen.
I'd just like to commend everyone involved. It was a great program. It was a, a win-win for the city, for Hawkeye, for the students, and for the young lady that purchased the property. So, good job to everybody.
Counsel? Just want to also give another shout-out to, uh, Ron Welper and the partnership with Hawkeye. In addition to the people that, uh, Ms. Jewen mentioned, uh, the community in the area is very glad about, uh, this opportunity, too, because it raises, uh, the values all around. So, um, uh, it's just the beginning. Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Jewen.
Yes.
Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mrs. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Number five?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Foyce.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing, and that is for project addendum to agreement for residential housing construction with Hawkeye Community College authorizing the sale and conveyance of Lot 10 in Block 1 of Manson's second addition to Hawkeye Community College.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this particular item on the agenda? Are there any comments on file?
No comments on file.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to adopt a resolution approving the project addendum to agreement for residential housing construction and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mrs. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
And Mrs. Jewen.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, uh, adopt a resolution authorizing the sale and conveyance of a certain tract of land known as Lot 10 in Block 1 of Manson's second addition in accordance with the project addendum to the agreement for residential housing construction with Hawkeye Community College and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mrs. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Foyce.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen.
Yes.
And Mr. Bozen.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Number six, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Bozen.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication and notice of public hearing as best as survey services for properties located at 915 Linden Avenue, 725 Glenwood Avenue, 123 East Parker Street, 114 East 10th Street, 105 East 11th Street, 413 Wellington Street, 409 Wellington Street, 630, 663 Kern Street, and 214 Cottage Street.
Second.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? The hearing is now open. Uh, Madam Clerk, are there any comments on file?
There are no comments on file.
Is there anyone on, in here or in cyberspace that want to speak to these items? For the second time?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Like to, uh, close the hearing?
Second.
That motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file, uh, there, we have, I guess we have no oral comments. Okay, we'll keep moving. A resolution confirming approval plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera, and authorizing to proceed.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Madam? That motion has been made with the second. Madam, uh, council questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I see on this list that we don't have the house on Williston. Mr. Anderson promised that he would have something in two weeks and that was more than two weeks ago.
All right. Uh, Mr. Anderson, uh, the Williston Street property.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director, we have a, uh, we're trying to schedule an asbestos person to go look at the Williston one to find out if they can take asbestos out of there in the standard fa- fashion. Um, as you may recall, the second floor is now on the first floor, so there's some structural concerns in there, so we may have to do it as a rackum, which would be an asbestos-containing demolition. So, we're waiting for confirmation on that they think that they can get in there with their equipment and do, uh, be safe and look at the asbestos. If they can, we'll look to add it onto this contract, but we haven't made that determination yet and we just need to get someone in there.
May I ask how long we've owned that property?
On Williston? I will have to look that up.
And can I add, can I answer your question? Um, I guess that, I guess the, the thought is, uh, is this property going to be down or moved forward within the next couple of months?
Yes, it will.
Okay.
Two months? Want to hold you to that?
Well, we have to see when the survey comes back and how they have to do it. They have to do it at a rackum. That's different than just demolition once they remove the asbestos, but I think folks want to see this property get, get under, uh, some type of abatement and let us know exactly where we're at in the process so we can get this thing down, so.
Just, just so you know, Mr. Anderson and, and the council at large, um, this is a hot topic in that neighborhood. I just finished walking that neighborhood and they are all very worried about this house. They've been for several years. They want this thing down and they're out of patience with this.
I just checked. We took possession of it in February of twenty eighteen. We did have a couple of housing developers that were interested in fixing it up until they saw the recent, um, status of it and so now we've moved to demolition.
All right, so you'll have some type of asbestos abatement, something, uh, to let us know what direction we need to move in within the next month or so, correct?
That is correct.
All right. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewin?
Yes.
Mr. Boson?
Yes.
And Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file and instruct the city clerk to read bids.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Madam Clerk?
All right, our first bid was from Hawkeye Environmental of Solon, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their bid amount was six thousand nine hundred fifty dollars. Second bidder was B2 Environmental of Omaha, Nebraska. They provided five percent security. Their bid amount was sixteen thousand two hundred dollars. Third bidder was ATC of Waterloo, Iowa. They did not provide security for their bid. Their bid amount was seven thousand two hundred fifty dollars. And the third and final bidder was Asbestos Inspections Testing and Training Incorporated of Monticello, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their bid amount was three thousand seven hundred dollars.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to adopt a resolution awarding asbestos abatement bid to Asbestos Inspection and Testing and Training Inc. of Monticello, Iowa in conjunction with the asbestos surveys of nine fifteen Linden Avenue, seven twenty-five Glenwood Avenue, one twenty-three East Parker Street, one fourteen East Tenth Street, one oh five East Eleventh Street, four thirteen Wellington Street, four oh nine Wellington Street, six sixty-three Kern Street, and two fourteen Cottage Street in the amount of three thousand seven hundred dollars and approving the contract bond and certificate of insurance and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
All right, that motion's been made with the second. Uh, Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewin?
Yes.
Mr. Boson?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
And Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Could someone take number seven?
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Amos.
Yes, uh, number seven, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication and notice of public hearing and that is an asbestos abatement services contract number AB dash eight dash two-nine-two-nine dash eight P for properties located at one eighteen Shillam Avenue, one seventy-nine Rebecca Lane, five fourteen Johnson Street, one hundred East Ninth Street, one thousand and four Fulton Street, eleven hundred Sycamore Street, twenty-one twenty-seven East Fourth Street, former Saint Mary's Church and School, and eighteen oh nine Blackhawk Street.
Second.
All right, that motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to these couple items on, I mean, this item on the agenda? Or in cyberspace or comments on file?
No comments on file.
All right. For the second time?
Mayor, I'd like to make a mo- Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing's closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion adopting a resolution confirming approval of plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera, and authorizing to proceed.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel? Questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewin?
Yes.
Mr. Boson?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
And Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion adopting a resolution awarding asbestos abatement bid to Advanced Environment, Environmental of Waterloo, Iowa in the amount of one hundred and fifty-eight thousand four hundred dollars and approving the contract bonds and certificate of insurance in conjunction with asbestos abatement services for one eighteen Shillam Avenue, one seventy-nine Rebecca Lane, five fourteen Johnson Street, one hundred East Ninth Street, one thousand four Fulton Avenue, eleven hundred Sycamore Street, twenty-one twenty-seven East Fourth Street, the former Saint Mary's Church and School, and eighteen oh nine Blackhawk Street and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
All right, that motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Um, the estimate for this one is fifty thousand dollars and I forgot to read the estimate for the prior bid. That was three thousand dollars. Um, so our first bidder for this project is R E W Services Corporation of Des Moines, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their bid amount was two hundred forty-nine thousand five hundred thirty-nine dollars. Second bidder was Advanced Environmental of Waterloo, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their bid amount was one hundred fifty-eight thousand four hundred dollars. Their third bidder was Abatement Specialties LLC of Cedar Rapids, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their bid amount was one hundred eighty-eight thousand two hundred nine dollars. Final bidder was Environmental Property Solutions of Urbendale, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their bid amount was seventy-three thousand one hundred fifty dollars. We need a, a vote on that, too.
Seventy-three and a hundred fifty-eight thousand.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I think, uh, because we didn't do a motion to receive and file and instruct the city clerk to read bids.
Right.
And then, and then the amount on here is not matching. No. Mr. Anderson?
One fifty-eight four hundred should match.
I thought I heard seventy-three thousand.
Oh, you're right.
There, there was a lower bid for seventy-some thousand. So, Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director, for, so the one bidder decided not to bid on one hundred East Ninth Street at all. Um, and so if you take that bid off the other one, they would be the low bidder at sixty thousand five hundred. So, they'd still be the low bid and we do want to include one hundred East Ninth Street in there. Um, so we're still going with the low bidder. It just looks a little deceptive because one of them left one of the properties off.
Are we able to legally do a motion to receive and, uh, I mean?
You could do an amendment to the resolution awarding the bid to also receive and file the bids for the project.
I don't know. Who made the, who made the motion?
I did, Mayor.
Mr. Amos did.
I think so.
Are we looking for an amendment to the motion?
Correct.
Can you tell him what it should be?
Yep. Mr. Amos, could you make a motion to also receive and file the bids?
Yes, uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the bids for the, uh, asbestos removal. Do you want me to read all the addresses again or is that necessary?
No, we're fine. Just need to, just need to hear your voice do the amendment to make the amendment. That's, uh, so.
Second.
All right, we got a second. Everyone clear on what just happened? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewin?
Yes.
Mr. Boson?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
And Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Number eight, please.
That was an amendment, so we got to go vote on that resolution itself. No, I'm sorry. No, that's my fault.
Uh, now it's time to vote. Uh, Madam Clerk? On the amendment?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
What exactly is a dollar amount that we're voting on then?
One hundred fifty-eight thousand four hundred dollars.
Yeah, the previous one. I'm sorry.
And that's the low bid considering what Noel said?
Yeah, they, they left off, left off, um, a hundred, a hundred East Ninth Street uh, from the, from the seventy-something thousand, so, uh, the hundred and fifty-eight is the low bid for the total package.
So, there was, Mr. Mayor, there was an eighty-seven thousand, or eighty-eight thousand dollar difference?
Mr. Anderson?
That's correct. The bid on, uh, from Advanced Environmental for the, uh, one hundred East Ninth one is a hundred and fifteen thousand. It's a large structure, so.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Good question. Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Jewin?
Yes.
Mr. Boson?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
And Mr. Greider?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Uh, number eight, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Number eight's a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing for asbestos, asbestos abatement services contract number AB dash twenty-twenty dash zero-eight dash one P for property located at one-two-zero Center Street.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this particular item on the agenda? Yes, sir.
David Dreyer, thirty-one forty-five West Fourth Street. Um, with the addition of all these properties that we're doing asbestos abatement on, I'm assuming that's going to up the number of properties that we will now own and, uh, assuming they will be tore down, uh, vacant lots. So, how many pieces of property does the city now own that are in a, uh, residential area or a commercial area or for future economic development?
Uh, Mr. Anderson, how many of these do we own?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director, I can get you a breakdown of the commercial versus the residential, um, versus the industrial lots. You know, obviously we have some of the industrial parks and we have some infill lots. Um, the number's over a hundred and fifty, uh, lots total that we have for smaller infill projects. Um, obviously all the ones in the asbestos contracts that we're working on now are currently city-owned and we're maintaining them as well, but demolition will follow, so there'll be more, uh, more grass to mow on those lots.
Noel, you know my email address. Give me that back, breakdown, please.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, is there anyone else, uh, that would like to make comments on, uh, here or in cyberspace? All right.
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral and written comments.
That motion has been, is it, is everyone muted on there that need to be? All right, that motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
I'd like to make a resolution confirming approval of plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera, and authorizing to proceed.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel, questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Boson?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
And Mrs. Jewin?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file and instruct the city clerk to read bids.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We need one more.
Aye.
All right. Uh, Madam Clerk?
All right, our estimate was ten thousand dollars. Our first bidder was R E W Services Corporation of Des Moines, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their bid amount was thirty-three thousand two hundred thirty-two dollars. Second bidder was Advanced Environmental of Waterloo, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their bid amount was thirteen thousand five hundred dollars. Third bidder was Abatement Specialties LLC of Cedar Rapids, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their bid amount was eleven thousand two hundred ninety dollars. Our fourth bidder was Environmental Property Solutions of Urbendale, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their bid amount was fifteen thousand eight hundred dollars. Our final bidder was Active Thermal Concepts of Hiawatha, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their bid amount was seventy-eight thousand six hundred twenty-five dollars.
All right, thank you.
I'd like to make a resolution awarding asbestos abatement bid to Abatement Specialties LLC of Cedar Rapids, Iowa and approving contract number AB dash twenty-twenty dash zero-eight dash one P bond and certificate of insurance in conjunction with asbestos abatement services at one-two-zero Center Street in the amount of eleven thousand two hundred ninety dollars and authorizing the mayor to execute said documents.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Amos?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I, I mean, we, the low bid, eleven thousand dollars, and there was a bid for seventy-eight thousand. Could Noel explain how come there can be a sixty, uh, seven thousand dollar difference? I mean, what is the low bid not doing that the high bid was doing?
Mr. Anderson?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director, I mean, sometimes it's just a matter of, of how much they want the work. Um, perhaps the other company has more work and was bidding this as a, as something else to do, but the other business really wanted it. Um, we looked through the specs and didn't find any abnormalities in terms of what they bid on, so everything should be, um, moving ahead. Some other good news on this one is we are, uh, able to, uh, receive a DNR grant that'll be coming through the city council for paperwork. Um, in partnership with this, the DNR will be awarding us six thousand two hundred ninety dollars of the eleven thousand two hundred ninety dollar amount for this through the DNR Brownfield Program to clean up sites like this. So, you'll see that coming to council in the upcoming weeks, but, um, so we've reviewed the paperwork, the DNR's reviewed the paperwork, and we're glad to move ahead with, uh, with Abatement Specialties.
All right, thank you. Um, is that good, Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
All right, uh, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Number nine, please. Anyone? I'll take it. I'd like to, anyone?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Amos?
Mr. Mayor. Number nine is a, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of no, of public hearing, and that is for demolition services, contract number D dash twenty twenty dash zero eight dash one P for property located at one twenty Center Street.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this particular item on the agenda? Anyone? In cyberspace? Who's that, Mr. Amos?
No, it wasn't me, Mayor. I thought someone said something, but I guess not, so I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Is that three?
Yeah, I said it.
Four?
Aye.
Um, that motion opposed? All right, thank you. Hearing's closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion adopting a resolution confirming approval of plans, spec- specifications, and form of contract, et cetera, and authorizing to proceed.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
And Mr. Amos?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion adopting a resolution, or a motion to receive and file and instruct the city clerk to read bids.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, opposed? Madam Clerk?
All right, our estimate for this was ten thousand dollars. Oh, that might be the wrong contract. I apologize. That can't be right.
We wish, well, not really. Eight hundred and twenty-nine thousand.
I don't have the estimate for that one, I guess.
Noel, what's the estimate for that?
The estimate was a hundred and fifty thousand.
One fifty, okay, thank you. Sorry about that.
All right, thank you.
Um, our first bidder was Lehman Trucking and Excavating Incorporated of Waterloo, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their bid amount was two hundred sixty-two thousand, five hundred forty-two dollars. And our second and final bidder was Schrader Excavating and Grading of Walford, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their bid amount was one twenty-nine, one hundred twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred dollars.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. This is the same kind of question on this one as the last one. We did have a mandatory walkthrough of this, of this, uh, parcel. Um, there is some ASH, A S H, materials out there, um, that, uh, they were determining where they could take them to for landfill location. Uh, so we're guessing that's the difference in the bid amounts. Um, staff did talk to Mr. Schrader, um, from Excavating and Grading of Walford, and they did confirm their bid amount.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion adopting a resolution awarding contract number D dash twenty twenty dash zero eight dash one P to Schrader Excavating and Grading of Walfer, uh, Walford, Iowa in the amount of one hundred and twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred dollars in conjunction with demolition services at one twenty Center Street, approving the contract bond and certificate of insurance, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
And Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Somebody take number ten?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Bozen?
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, proof of publication note, and, uh, notice of public hearing for the Five-Salem Brothers Convention Center Edition and Lobby Renovation.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
There's three. I need one more.
Aye.
Four.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the hearing is open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this item on the agenda?
David Dreyer, thirty-one forty-five West Fourth Street. I also note something on number twelve, on the consent agenda that kind of pertains to this. A four hundred thousand dollar, four million dollar general obligation bond, uh, for the convention center. Over the years, we have bonded seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to take care of the convention center. And then we tried to sell it. So how much time and money did we spend to only get the center back? It just seems to me like, like we're, we're spending a lot of money on the convention center that we should have never tried to get rid of. We should have just gone ahead and fixed it. That's my comment. Thank you. Cause we're doing it now.
Yep. All right, thank you. Um, how much, what's the question? How much, how much did we spend on it when we were trying to, huh?
How much money was spent on trying to get the convention center back?
Uh, Michelle, how much money was spent on trying to get the convention center back?
This is Michelle Whedon, her Chief Financial Officer. I, I'm not sure we spent money to get it back. We certainly spent effort, you know, trying to sell, to sell it. Actually, we didn't spend a lot of effort to sell it. Someone offered to buy it, and we did our due diligence, whether it was a credible offer, which we all know what happened with that. So I don't think we spent a great deal of funds to do that. And I do know there were citizens that thought it was a very valuable asset and we should keep it. So that is why we are, we are trying to fix it. If we're going to have one, we do need to take care of it properly. So we are attempting to do that now.
All right, thank you. Uh, anyone else in cyberspace with any questions? Uh, somebody can close that hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral comments.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now closed.
Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera, and authorizing to proceed.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel?
Quick question, Mr. Mayor. I, uh, I did ask Michelle for a, a complete accounting of what we've spent so far on the convention center and, and future spending, and I want to thank her for getting that, that back to me. That's my understanding that what we did in the consent agenda, the selling of, of the bonds is gonna hopefully cover, cover this. We do have some future expenses coming up, at least, uh, at least what she sent me. And I'd like to ask Michelle if she has identified any funding sources for these future expenses, cause we, we were looking at roof tuck pointing, uh, a, a number of, of items coming up in the future.
All right, Michelle?
Michelle Whedon, her Chief Financial Officer. So we are hoping to raise some grant funding for some of these projects. And if not, with the intent would be to continue to work them into the city's longer-term capital improvements program. You know, if, if we can get charitable funding, obviously, that relieves property taxes and also might help us to get it done faster, but we are not certain yet whether that will work out.
So we'll be, we'll be reaching out?
Reaching out, thank you. And then the, the last thing, I, I was just curious, the, the bid tab wasn't included in the, in our, uh, packet.
I'll be reading that.
Thank you. That's all I have, sir.
And it's really long, too.
Oh, no, we'll just leave it at there.
All right, counsel questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen? Mrs. Jewen?
Yes, sorry.
That's okay. Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
And Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, instruct the city clerk to read bids and refer to the building department for review.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Three?
Aye.
I said aye.
Yep. All right, we got four. Thank you. All opposed? All right, Madam Clerk?
The estimate was four million, four hundred thousand dollars. Our first bidder was Henkel Construction Company of Mason City, Iowa. They're, they provided five percent security. Their base bid amount was six million, six hundred fifty-four thousand dollars. Alternate A one, six thousand dollars. Alternate A two, fifty-six thousand. Alternate A three, eight hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. Alternate A four, twenty-three thousand dollars. Alternate A five, three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Alternate A six, one hundred forty-eight thousand dollars. They provided no bid on alternates, uh, number two and number three. And one hundred and eighty thousand dollar deduction to remove and add footings. Our second bidder was Larson Construction Company of Independence, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their base bid was six million, two hundred sixty-five thousand dollars. Alternate A one, forty-five thousand dollars. Alternate A two, seventy thousand dollars. Alternate A three, six hundred thousand dollars. Alternate A four, twenty-two thousand dollars. Alternate A five, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Alternate A six, no bid. And no bid on alternate number one and alternate number two. They included a fifty thousand dollar deduction to remove slash add footings. Our third bidder is Cardinal Construction of Waterloo, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their base bid amount is six million, sixty-one thousand dollars. Alternate A one, forty-six thousand. Alternate A two, sixty-one thousand. Alternate A three, five hundred sixty-eight thousand. Alternate A four, twenty thousand, three hundred dollars. Alternate A five, four hundred thirty-eight thousand dollars. Alternate A six, one hundred forty-eight thousand dollars. No bid on alternate number two and number three, and a six hundred and, excuse me, and six hundred ninety-two thousand, seven hundred dollar for the deduction to remove slash add footings. Our final bidder is Pro Commercial of Huxley, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their base bid amount is six million, forty-nine thousand dollars. Alternate A one, forty-five thousand dollars. Alternate A two, seventy-three thousand, seven hundred ninety-two dollars. Alternate A three, four hundred fifty-eight thousand, four hundred thirty-seven dollars.
Those three things are gonna confuse me.
Alternate A four, twenty-two thousand, six hundred three dollars. Alternate A five, three hundred fifty-four thousand, two hundred dollars. Alternate A six, one hundred sixty-eight thousand dollars. Or they added a second dollar amount in there, three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. They provided no bid for alternate number three and a twenty-five thousand dollar deduction to remove slash add footings. That's it?
And then they'll have to break down, break down, uh, to be able to look at those, correct?
Pardon?
Counsel, they'll be able to see those numbers?
Yeah, I'll upload the tab, and the, uh, bid documents that were received from all the bidders are available on the city website in our document center.
All right, thank you. All right, boy, that was, uh, hearing central. Uh, can we do, uh, eleven, twelve, thirteen, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Number eleven's a resolution approving a variance to the requirements of the subdivision ordinance in section eleven dash three dash four B to allow for the recording of the Cedar Valley Crossing Final Platte, a ten-lot commercial industrial subdivision located southwest of thirty-three fifty-three Marni Avenue that was not recorded within nine months after it was approved by the city council on April first, twenty nineteen. Number twelve is a resolution approving an early access agreement with Stige Investments LLC to allow earth-moving activities in preparation for development of the site north of thirty-four eighty-eight Wagner Road, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. And number thirteen is a resolution approving the project designs of a home to be built by Hawkeye Community College on Lot Ten, Block One of Manson's second edition of Newell Street at a budget not to exceed one hundred thirty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars.
Second.
All right, that motion has been made with the second. Any questions on these items? All right, I think I want to acknowledge, uh, Craig Clark, sitting way in the back, uh, from Hawkeye Community College, former, uh, building official, uh, for the city, so thank you, Craig, for your work, uh, on this project, too, on thirteen. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
And Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Number fourteen, approve a resolution approving a request for modern design on behalf of Image Point for an appeal of the driveway policy to allow for an extended curb cut on Cornwall Avenue located at twelve twenty-four La Porte Road. Number fifteen, resolution approving an amendment to the development agreement with four oh one Devonshire LLC, changing completion date to May seventh, twenty twenty-one, and approving a different style of new single-family home located east of four oh five Derbyshire Drive, I'm sorry, Devonshire Drive, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. And sixteen, resolution approving the Main Street Parking Lot Loan Refinancing and Continued Loan Guarantee by the city of Waterloo in an amount not to exceed hundred and eighty-one thousand, three hun- uh, hundred and, yeah, hundred and eighty-one thousand, three hundred and seventy-nine dollars and thirty cents, and authorizing mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second. Uh, questions, anyone?
Mr. Mayor?
We got a audience member?
I'm sorry.
David Dreyer, thirty-one forty-five West Fourth Street. Uh, I'd like an explanation on number sixteen as to what the, uh, Main Street Parking Lot Loan Refinanc, uh, Loan is. Didn't know we had such a thing, that the city was guaranteeing somebody to, uh, an explanation.
All right, thank you, Mr. Dreyer. Uh, Noel or Eric?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. So back when the Main Street Parking Lot, uh, was built, um, the city of Waterloo was asked to, uh, guarantee the loan as part of that, uh, project. The city did that, and essentially, every time, uh, Main Street, Main, at this point, Main Street is paying off the debt and the loan, uh, based on the income that they make on it. Um, so they're paying off it probably in a regular fashion, uh, with not a lot of extra payments in there. Uh, about every five years or so, um, they're generally refinancing or, or going for a lower interest rate with the bank. Um, as a guarantor to the loan, we are required to take council action to approve that.
All right. Mr. Bozen?
I was, we have Noel on, I was looking for a brief overview on fourteen and fifteen also.
Noel?
Number fourteen, um, is modern design, um, on behalf of Image Point for an appeal to driveway policy. They're trying to add some more parking spaces. I do believe, uh, Mr. Trenell is on the line, um, for Image Point, their architect, um, if you like to ask him the specifics of it, but they're basically asking for a, a larger curb cut to put in, uh, back in parking on the road to the north.
Okay, thank you.
Number fifteen, um, is the, uh, small residential lot that we have at the corner of, uh, Ainsborough and Devonshire. As you may recall, uh, we had a Mr. Bob Moore that wanted to build a house there. He's slightly behind schedule. He's had trouble getting some of the materials. Um, driving by there now, you'll see that there is, um, some equipment out there to start the construction very soon. So he's asking for an amendment to the development agreement to give him a little bit more time to get that house built. And there is a slight change, um, in the design, and, and like I said, it's very slight, um, in terms of the differences between the Sierra Ray and now the Baymount, um, house designs that they're going with, um, or the Baywood, I'm sorry, um, in terms of it being a single-story with a garage, three-bedroom. Uh, the square footages are very similar at about sixteen hundred and fourteen hundred. So we think it's a very good house design for that area, um, similar to the original one.
All right, any other questions? All right. Uh, Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
And Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Thank you. Seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to adopt a resolution approving temporary easement agreements with Timothy J. Chamberlain and Sharon K. Chamberlain in the amount of two hundred and fifty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents for property located at thirty-seven twenty-sixth East Shawless Road. And Austin J. Payne in the amount of one hundred dollars. Uh, thirty-six seventy-five Cedar Terrace Drive. Stephen D. Coleman and Susan C. Coleman in the amount of one hundred dollars at four thousand three East Shawless Road. Laura D. Fay in the amount of one hundred dollars. Forty-eleven East Shawless Road. And Becky S. Hughes and Keith D. Nickel in the amount of one hundred dollars north of forty-two thirty-two East Shawless Road in conjunction with the Shawless Road Trail Phase Two Project. And then number eighteen is adopting a resolution accepting grant number three dash nineteen dash zero zero nine four dash zero four six dash twenty twenty from the U S D O T and the F A A in the amount of four million, eight hundred fifty-five thousand, eight hundred and fifty-four dollars for projects- for projects at the Waterloo Regional Airport and authorizing the mayor and the city attorney to execute said documents. Number nineteen is a resolution approving a construction-related service agreement with AECOM Technical Services Inc. of Waterloo, Iowa in the amount of four-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, five-hundred dollars in conjunction with the paving improvements and other miscellaneous work associated with FAA grant number three dash nineteen dash zero-zero-nine-four dash zero-zero-four-six dash twenty-twenty and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second. Counsel questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
And Mrs. Jewin?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Uh, could someone take twenty through twenty-two?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Number twenty's a resolution awarding the bid to Cedar Valley Corp. LLC of Waterloo, Iowa in the amount of four million, one-hundred-and-sixteen thousand, seven-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars. Approving contract bond and certificate of insurance in conjunction with Waterloo Regional Airport projects associated with FAA grant number three dash one-nine dash zero-zero-nine-four dash zero-four-six dash twenty-twenty and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. Number twenty-one is a resolution approving a grant agreement with the Iowa Department of Transportation Aviation Bureau for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. Project number two-two-five-six-two and contract number nine dash one dash two dash, no, nine dash one dash two-ten dash ALO dash one-three-five in conjunction with air service marketing at the Waterloo Regional Airport and authorizing the mayor and airport director to execute said document. Number twenty-two is a resolution approving addendum number four to the professional services agreement with Robinson Engineering Company of Independence, Iowa, originally executed July thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen in an amount not to exceed one-thousand-eight-hundred-and-twenty dollars in conjunction with the Westdale Subdivision Swale Project and authorizing the mayor to execute said document.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewin?
Yes.
And Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Keith. You can't leave yet. You gotta stay here with the team. As he looks to the side and keeps walking. Twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Excuse me. Uh, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving a professional services agreement with Stanley Consultants, Inc. of Des Moines, Iowa in an amount not to exceed one million, forty-three thousand for the preliminary and final engineering design and bidding phases in conjunction with the Park Avenue and Eleventh Street Bridge Replacements project and authorizing the mayor to execute said document. Twenty-four is a resolution approving construction of Phase Two of the fiscal year twenty twenty asphalt overlay program contract number nine-nine-two. And twenty-five is a resolution approving an intergovernmental transfer of public funds agreement with the Iowa Department of Human Services and authorizing the mayor to execute said documents. Second.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel questions?
I, I have a couple.
Mr. Bozen?
Thank you. Uh, I reached out to, uh, Mr. Knutson on the funding source for twenty-three and, and Michelle, and I kind of got conflicting funding sources. So I'd like a, a, an overview of that. And on number twenty-four, I would also like an overview of the, of how much we're, we're talking for the remainder of the project and, and to get, to make sure that we have our local option sales tax that will cover it.
Well, let's start with twenty-four. I think we were going to wait and see how funding was going. How are we on twenty-four and, uh, paying for it?
This is Michelle Weedner, Chief Financial Officer. Local option taxes being a tough one to track this year, but, um, right now, I believe we will meet our budget, and so we're able to, I think we'll be fine to fund this part of the contract.
All right, and then, um, uh, who can speak to the bridge, the million for the bridge, uh, design?
This is Michelle. I, I can do that, too. We, um, I got confused. I've got, we got too many projects going on right now. We are planning to fund that final design using road use tax, which probably wouldn't be my first choice, but, um, we do budget about seven-hundred thousand a year for bridges. So as long as we don't do any others, we will be able to complete that.
Do, do we have a, a dollar amount, sir, on twenty-four? It wa- there wasn't anything in the, in the, our counsel attachment. And that would be for the asphalt overlay.
Twenty-four, how much is the rest of that overlay project?
I am not sure.
This is Jamie Knutson, the city engineer. I apologize, Mr. Bozen. I don't have that directly in front of me. If memory serves, it was going to be a million and a half, two mil- two, around two million dollars, somewhere in that neighborhood. But, uh, I apologize. I'm at home and, and don't have access to all of my, all of my information.
We got it covered, though. See, can somebody get that information, uh, to Dave?
I would appreciate it.
Or to the rest of the council, too?
I can find that and have my staff get it to you, counsel, tomorrow, yes.
All right, thank you. All right, uh, other questions? Uh, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewin?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
And Mr. Amos?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Twenty-four, please. I mean, twenty-six, I'm sorry. Maybe put on my glasses, that'd help.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Klein? Mr. Greider?
Thank you. Uh, I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, and consider and pass for the first time an ordinance rescinding ordinance number five-one-two-three, an ordinance vacating portions of Jackson and Merriman Streets, and rescinding resolutions number two-zero-one-two-dash-six-five-six, a resolution authorizing the sale and conveyance of portions of Jackson and Merriman Street for one dollar plus cost to Union Baptist Church.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Uh, counsel questions? Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewin?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
And Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules. Second.
Motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewin?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
And Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to consider and pass for the second and third times and adopt said ordinance. Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Uh, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Greider?
Mr. Gray, before you do that, can you give an overview of that, please?
Noel, I think we're giving, uh, some parcels or portions to the church. Um, Noel, you want to give us an update?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. That is correct, Mr. Mayor. This is a portion of, uh, of Jackson, Merriman, um, basically bounded by, uh, Shilliam and, uh, Halsted on the other ends. Um, kind of borders along the railroad yard. The church owns the properties on both sides. So we were looking, they were looking at a project to do there a while back. They have not proceeded with that project. Um, so we looked at it internally as staff in terms of should we just rescind that and, and have the streets back there or, or, uh, close them off? And the decision was made that we'll just rescind this and have them continue to be streets and look for new development opportunities.
So they're not interested in it any further?
They're not moving ahead at this time, um, or have any immediate interest to move ahead at this time.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewin?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right.
All right. Uh, twenty-seven, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Twenty-seven is fiscal year twenty twenty-one sidewalk repair assessment program, Zone Ten, contract number ten-eighteen. Oh, I'm sorry. It's a resolution approving proposed construction of sidewalk improvements fiscal year, blah, blah, blah.
Second.
Madam, uh, 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 motion been made with the second. Uh, questions? Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Jewin?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
And Mr. Greider?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
It is also a resolution to fix the value of the lots. Do I have to go through all of these? No, is that?
Yeah.
Okay, resolution to fix the value of the lots.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second. Uh, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
And Mrs. Jewin?
Yes.
It is also a resolution to adopt proposed platte and schedule of assessments and estimate of costs.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewin?
Yes.
And Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
And finally, it's a resolution of necessity and setting date of public hearing is September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty.
Second. Second.
That motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein? Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewin?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
And Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 We adjourned. Thank you.